Students have a 90-minute block for ELA instruction. Also have additional 45 minutes for most of our students performing below grade level. So that'd be your Level 1 and 2 students. Some supplemental materials that aid with instruction include, you know, FastBridge, like Mr. Hebert spoke of. It's an evaluation tool that lets us know how our students are performing and gives us specific data on students' specific deficits that they may have. We adopted a G3000 last year at the high school, or we didn't adopt it. We began using it at the high school. And this year we've expanded it to middle and high. It's a very impressive tool. It is not a program. You just put students on and they go do their thing. It is a tool for teachers. One of the big things that we heard from our ELA teachers that, you know, with the new rigor of FSA is pulling multiple sources together and providing differentiated materials for all their students. This program does it for them. So a student will go in and take an assessment on ACHIEVE. It puts them at their level. So every, all the work that they do is going to be at their level or slightly above their level from there on out. So it does a lot of the work the teacher had to go out and scramble to find those resources. We had district program specialists and we had Ms. Swiget and Mr. Crisp at the time working on materials, supplemental materials for those Level 1 and 2 students. And now Ms. Swiget went to Citrus High School to work with assessment. And now we have Ms. Deborah Beck from Crystal River High School that's joining us in that position and you're going to hear from her today also. Core Connections training for middle and high school. Very good training. What we're finding is that, you know, the transition from the old FCAT standards to the FSA standards, you know, reaching that level of rigor that's required with FSA and the Core Connections training is helping our teachers understand the level of rigor that's required and helping us to understand the standards and how to meet those. And one of the things that I'm most excited about are the literacy coaches assigned to each high school. I shared that at one of our meetings. And, you know, our high school administrators, they all work very hard and have a lot of areas to focus on. But now we have one person that's going to work with our reading teachers and our ELA teachers on a daily basis. And again, a little slide to talk about the reading coaches. We have two of the three reading coaches with us today. Mr. Crisp at Crystal River High School, Ms. Wilber at La Canto High School, and Ms. Harris. You had an obligation at Citrus High School. She's like, "I really have something I need to do with our teachers and our staff there." And I said, "Well, that's why we put you in that place, so you stay right where you are." And not that these two don't, but we wanted everyone to be here if they could. Again, they're in the classroom four days a week. The fifth day, they're with us here at the district office. They plan and collaborate together. During the summer, they went to a coach's training. I believe it was in Tallahassee, but they went to a coach's training that taught them how to be more effective coaches in the processes and procedures that will aid them in becoming a better coach. And so they put that plan together and on Mondays, they get, they talk with each other what's working, what tools are we using to collect data, what tools are we using to facilitate conversations with teachers, what tools are we using to facilitate conversation with students. But the key is, is even when they're on campus, they're in classes all day long. They don't have a designated planning period. We purposely did that because on Monday, Monday's their planning day. The rest of the week, they can see any teacher, any period of the day that they need to. They can work with any group of students that they want to work with because they're available during that entire time. Facilitate trainings with teachers, as we talked about earlier. We have teachers that are out of field, teachers that are new, and they work with them specifically on getting caught up and helping them plan lessons, helping them analyze data. You know, they go in and one of the big things that they learn, it's sort of obvious, but they're in the classroom doing a lot of co-teaching with our teachers. And they're getting to know the students, just like that teacher may know the students. So they're like, it's a partnership that they're working with our teachers and providing observations and feedback to those teachers and modeling lessons. You know, if you find a teacher that's struggling in a certain area, they will go in and model that lesson and show them how to do it, or they may teach it together so that they're, again, improving instruction on a regular basis. And as you saw from our ELA data at the secondary level, that's an area that we really are throwing a lot of resources at and a lot of concentrated focus at. What do they do with students? Again, they're assessing reading skills and tracking and interpreting data, but they're teaching students how to track and interpret data. And that's the key, is once students take ownership of their learning and know where they are and know where they need to be, that's going to increase student learning. And again, teaching reading and writing strategies. Social Studies, Ms. Beatty. You guys have seen her speak and work. She does an outstanding job in this area. Our major areas of focus for social studies, partnership with local governments, veterans' organizations promote civic awareness and patriotism. You know, we participate, well, let's step back. As a district, you know, that is something very important to us, you know, respect to our veterans and, you know, we have designated parking spots for our Purple Heart veterans at each of our schools. And so that's very important to us. So the 9/11 exhibit, which unfortunately failed during the hurricane this year, we're actively participating in that and get students to those events. Did a mock election across the district in the secondary world last year. I'm not sure, did we do that elementary also? Elementary, so elementary through high school, we did mock elections, worked closely, Ms. Beatty worked closely with the supervisor of elections. And this year, through the Education Foundation, with their support and the support of Supervisor of Elections, they got a pocket Constitution and Bill of Rights magnet for all our 7th and 12th grade students. Veterans in the Classroom, it was nationally recognized last year. And Ms. Beatty may even want to share a little bit more about that. But we were contacted by the National Veterans Organization, say, "Your model of bringing veterans into the classroom is a model." And they recognized us for that. So we had, in 2016, we had 80 veterans visit over 200 classrooms. So that's, that's pretty impressive, that students can get to see veterans who served our country in the classroom. Teacher collaboration, we've been working on that. Ms. Beatty's been working on that, increasing collaboration. Our civic scores and our US history scores are both products of that collaboration because we brought teachers from across the district together to work on best practices. And now through Skyward, they share a lot of resources. They can share common tests, they can share common worksheets, they can share information real easily, and they have been doing that with civics and it's increasing with American history. Formative assessments, Citrus Formative Assessments. Again, Mr. John Mullin works tirelessly to make sure that we have a quality product for our schools to use for formative assessments. And that helps our teachers know if they're on the right track and what they need to reteach. And so we've been using those and we're going to continue to use those. And then social studies infusion into ELA. I know we've been working on that at the secondary level, but I know when we went through and did walkthroughs last year at the elementary level, you might even see that happening more as the social studies and reading join together. All right, so now we're going to have...
Can you just mention one thing? With all the work that's been done with the veterans at the schools, you hear from them as they're speaking with each other, actually not directly with you, that they appreciate the fact that Vietnam veterans now are put in the group and respected like everything else because, as you know and everyone knows, when they came back, it was cold shoulder and a lot of people couldn't talk. Now through these programs, they are respected and respected.
There's a great series on PBS now about Mike and Bert's on PBS right now. It's really good, too. Ms. Molly, you know, since Mr. Hebert's been gone, Mr. Mullin was saying he couldn't remember how to spell Ohio. Do you remember how to spell it?
I do. I'll never forget it. Good morning. I'm going to be talking about our ELA at the elementary level and specifically our text-based writing. Amy, Ms. Crowell shared our data and we were very disappointed with the writing scores that we received this year. And not only at the district level, but our teachers were also upset because we've put so much time and resources into this area. So in August, a district team met consisting of two principals, an assistant principal, a teacher, a TOSA, and then district staff members, along with our Core Connections consultant, and her name is Anastasia Peters. We met and showed her our data to try and determine why this is happening. If we're putting so much time and effort, why are these the results that we're getting? We took her to a school so that we can look at what's currently happening, what the current reality is. And then we came back to the district office and developed a plan based on our findings to try and increase student success and learning gains. Prior to this meeting, I looked at the different districts in Florida and specifically at districts where their 4th and 5th grade scores were at an average of 7 or 8. 10 is the highest you can receive, and the highest average in the state was an 8. Ours was around a 5.2, between a 5.2 at the 4th grade and a 5.6 at the 5th grade. So I wanted to see what are they doing that maybe we could implement in our district? So I looked, they're going through the plans, and the district does a district writing prompt initiative. So we discussed that with the district team that met and decided that we were going to try and implement that here in Citrus County. So students are going to respond to three district writing prompts, one in the fall, the winter, and the spring. Their responses are going to be scored by their teachers and then recorded on data sheets in Google Drive so that we can, at the district level, have access to those scores. Their actual student papers are going to be scanned into the Google Drive so that we can pull those when we need to to see what, what scores they're receiving and what that score looks like. Because the state does not and will not be providing us with the scored student papers after FSA. So we want to be able to, we get Johnny's paper back, or we get his score at the end after FSA, and we see that he has scored a 7. We're never going to know what that looks like and why he scored a 7. So we want to be able to pull his papers from the fall, the winter, and spring district writing prompt assessments to see what that looks like, since we're never going to have that information from the state. This is going to allow us to track the student scores and provide feedback to the students and the teachers. And actually, during this first writing prompt, we've completed already the fall writing prompt. The teachers were also asked to respond as well. Their names were not indicated on the writing prompts. They were just asked to respond as a student at the end of that grade level. Then Anastasia Peters, our Core Connections writing consultant, went in and looked at all the teachers at each school. And she was able to tailor her professional development to what the school needed. At one school, she noticed that the teachers were missing a controlling main idea. So she was able to provide professional development and give them the supports they need to implement that correctly in their classrooms. At the next school she visited, all the teachers had the controlling main idea, but they were missing something else. So instead of doing the same professional development that she did at the school where they were missing the controlling main idea, she was actually able to take it a step further and give them instruction in the area they were needing. So we're hoping by building the teacher's capacity, we'll be able to increase student achievement in those specific areas. Currently, Anastasia Peters is visiting each of our elementary schools and pinpointing the areas of weakness. And like I said, she's doing her professional development based on those findings. She's going into our 5th grade classrooms and modeling lessons. We were, last year she was able to go into a 4th or 5th grade classroom. This year, we asked her to go into 5th grade so that we could target the learning gains from 4th to 5th grade. So she's been modeling lessons in 5th grade classrooms, providing instructional feedback, developing model essays, providing response scoring practice, discussing best practices, and also reviewing what the state expects from the FSA scores so that the teachers are better aware in that area. This year, we have many Core Connections trainings scheduled for our new 2-grade level teachers. Our teachers on special assignment are conducting trainings for new 4th and 5th grade teachers. And then Anastasia Peters is providing training for K-1 and then 2 and 3. And then in January, we're going to have her meet with all of our 5th grade teachers to focus on learning gains from 4th to 5th grade and see if there's anything else we can do for them before the test in the spring. So these trainings are going to help provide consistency across the district. If a teacher used to teach 2nd grade and now she is going to be in 4th grade, she is able to attend these trainings so she can teach to the grade that she is currently teaching. This is an example of a FSA writing prompt for 5th grade. So if you want to read over that, that's what they, this is exactly pulled from the FSA. This is what they are asked to do. And then I have copies for you of a text set. It actually has three texts or three sources that the students are asked to read and then
Do you have the blue book that they use to score these essays?
Then the next two slides, I've taken a model essay. This is what we expect the students to be able to do at the end of the year, the response to this prompt where they pull the three or based on what opinion they choose from the sources. If students, we've noticed that in their practice writing prompts, they tend to summarize the first article, then summarize the second article, then summarize the third article. That's going to give them a very low score because if they do not elaborate, they are not going to have any original content. And the state typically will give them either a 0 or a 1 if that happens. So we wanted to see if our teachers were summarizing and make sure that that wasn't happening because if the teachers are summarizing and the students are modeling after them, then our scores are going to be low. So we wanted to help make sure that wasn't happening. Any questions?
Hello, everyone. All right, I got a big packet for you. So what I wanted to do was pretty much walk you through the intricacies of a secondary teacher. Just kind of backward design and scope and sequence and just all the technicalities of what it takes to actually build upon a multiple text set piece. So I have one to... All right, so my first slide, what you see is pretty much what you have in your hands is your Language Arts Florida Standards. And you actually have two of those. The first thing that was on top was actually a great packet. I'm going to piggyback off what Ms. Molly was talking about. And this little packet here is from Core Connections. We just received one of these at our trainings at the middle school. Our Core Connections trainings will be, for the high school, will be next week. And then I think in October, we also have some follow-up training on Core Connections at the high school level. And I think Chris is coming out for that and I will be providing, providing the middle school Core Connections training for our middle school teachers. So in this packet, this is really great because if, you have a lot of movement and fluidity with the teachers from middle school to the high school, from the elementary school to the middle school. And the standards do change from year to year. And so it's just nice to see what is, what is required in 6th grade, what is required in 7th grade, and then what's required in 8th grade. And so sometimes when you see those variations in the scores, if they go down in your writing, sometimes that has to do with the impact of just a small little term like subjective versus objective. Because at the 8th grade level, you can write subjectively. At the 9th grade level, you cannot. And so how do we teach them the difference between that? And then by the 10th grade level, because the 9th and 10th are the same, the, it just is the cognitive complexity that gets a little more difficult on some of the questions. But the writing standards don't change. And so by the 10th grade level, if the scores are a little bit better, it's because they have one year extra to practice those standards. They haven't changed. All right? So just throughout this, this is just something that they, like I said, they just received at Core Connections. And on the right-hand side, I love the right-hand column because this is actually the questions from the item specifications off of your FSA portal. And so if your teachers are trying to build higher order questioning for different pieces within their text sets, whether they're getting it from their online textbook or whether they're getting it from Common Lit or whether they're pulling from UZLA, we have to use supplemental materials. I know Lea and Keith did a great job last year of pulling together for the county and the teachers, you know, just a great wealth of information for the teachers to look at. And then here, you can add this component in and it just helps you, you know, it helps limit how much you have to seek and search and spend your time outside of the 7 to 2:30, you know, or 2:45 when you're sitting at home on the couch trying to write your test the next day. This is just a great tool. So this was something that came from Core Connections. Now, the next piece is actually the entire set of LAFS standards for 9 and 10. So as you look at these, there are way, way more than a 40, all right? Especially when you get into the subcategories of these and you break them down. So when you get a new teacher and they come in and they look at this, it can be extremely overwhelming. For you to master this as a teacher, it can take years. And then if you move up a level, you again have to go back and you have to look at it and you have to say, "What does this standard this year say versus what, you know, it said last year?" And, and really what's most beneficial is if you can take your teachers and they actually look at this, and as a 9th grade teacher, I want to make sure what does, what does the 10th grade level say and what does the 8th grade level say? Because I know what my kids should be coming in with and the knowledge that they have and then what I should be expecting them to leave me with. What does my next level require? So address that. So within our county, at the ELA level, whether it's 6 through 10 or 12, they all have my.hrw.com, which is the HMH textbook. It's called Collections. And I actually have a little picture here from one of the, Unit 6, from the 10th grade book. And I think that's been in, probably, we've been using that for about five years now? Four, five years? Each and each? Yeah, about that. And we also have the district formative assessments. They've been referred to as the Citrus Formative Assessments. This year, they have gone to, you have the ability to decide whether you want to give them or not, and that's a great piece. And Mr. Mullin has done a wonderful job. I know that last year's exam for my kids, it really reflected what they were seeing on their FSA. So the rigor on the DFA is, it left some of my kids, I taught honors last year, and so my kids really were asking questions and it was beneficial to the classroom instruction and how I can change what I was doing in my class to actually get them to understand what was on that test. And they still did not know what an adverb was, but that's okay. We learned after that. So that was good. And then we have teacher selective material, which I will talk about in a second as what you see on the color print here. Just let me walk you through this slide. So mid-level reading is your Level FSA 2. And within there, we are using FastBridge that you've heard about already. And we also have the Close Reader, which is a material from HMH. And we used to use it in the regular classes, but the teachers decided a few years back that the Close Reader would be more beneficial at the mid-level. And it has that guided practice in there, so it just helps the children actually think about, you know, "What should I be asking? What should I be doing? What's that next step?" So they actually have some of that guided practice within, within the workbook. And then they have that mid-level county resource bank that Mr. Crisp and Ms. Swiget created and is beautiful, and it's all online. Then you have your intensive low-level reading classes, which are your FSA Level 1s. And they have FastBridge, and then they also have Syngage, Edge Inside, and the ACHIE 3000. And I know a lot of the teachers are still working on figuring out how to implement that. It is a tool, it is a beautiful tool, and like anything else, there is a learning curve. So I'm hoping by next year, that learning curve won't hurt so bad. And by the end of the year, they will be using it productively and efficiently. And then they also have the Low-Level County Resource Bank there. So I just want to give you a glimpse of what I taught in my 10th grade level. When they would come in, and this is from Unit 6, and when you teach Unit 6, I think it's Unit 6 of the 10th grade, yep, it says Collection 6. So when they come in, it's about hard-won liberty. How and why do cultures want freedom? And what is freedom? And how do I have to fight for it? So instead of just throwing at them Dr. King's Letter from Birmingham Jail, you have to build background knowledge. I can't just give them that one piece from the textbook and expect them to know everything, you know, that they need to know about Dr. King and then the 1960s and the Civil Rights Movement. So as they come in, I have to go outside of my book. So what you have here on your piece is you see the Gettysburg Address. And within your piece, you do have a copy of the Gettysburg Address. So I really use the Gettysburg Address as content to, one, teach them when Dr. King speaks about the history of the fight and the struggle. It gives them a little context about one, the year. But even within this piece, I start teaching grammar. There's parallelism in here. You also have your parallel words, your parallel phrases, your parallel, whoop, just went there. You have your clauses, sorry. Because we teach the difference between independent clauses and dependent clauses. That is a required skill, not just on your, the grammar portion, but if you are going to have a 10 on your writing, you have to use varied sentence structure. And so you must use independent clauses and you must use dependent clauses and you have to vary them. So you also need simple, you need complex. So this is just a great way to teach them really quickly, how does that look within here? Okay? It also teaches them antithesis, juxtaposition, and all kinds of beautiful things in that one little piece. Then after that, what I would go to is a video. So if you go to your next piece, you'll see some questions from a video called Eyes on the Prize. Our history department would also use this at the high school level. So I really would only watch about a 20-minute clip out of the video and focus in on just that section that would deal with what was happening at Dr. King's time in the 1960s at that point. All right? And from that point, then we would go on, and then I would actually show them Letter from, to Dr. King. Because if you're going to respond to somebody's argument, you have to know what the argument is. So Dr. King's argument, Letter from Birmingham Jail, started because of this letter from the clergyman and a rabbi. So if it's from a clergyman and a rabbi when we talk in class, why is it significant that the rabbi is on there when we talk about the struggle for freedom? Especially when 6, 7th, and 8th grade, they have numerous opportunities to learn about the Holocaust. So it just should impact there because when we talk about the scope and sequence in their knowledge, at the middle school level, they're learning content that they need at the high school level. And then when you get to AP tests, they are supposed to have a base knowledge of content that they may not have read that year. But if they're going to pass that AP test, they have to have read it. They have to use things that they may not have read in class, and they have to be able to formulate that and use it on their AP test. All right? And then the next piece is actually Dr. King's, "I Have a Dream," and I have dreams, sorry, "Letter from Birmingham Jail." And what you'll notice is that it's in black and white. It is in black and white because this is what I would give the kids. And if you look at the top, it tells them that they have a job to do, their job for just pretty much about the two, two to three paragraphs they have to go through and find the argument from the clergyman. And then they have to, and they will highlight that in pink, and then they have to find the ethos, pathos, and logos. And they highlight those all in a different color because now you're using their, those means of argument and rhetoric, and how do you build a valid, reliable argument within your piece? And so as a teacher, there's just a lot of different pieces here. And we go from, and I have not been changing my slides, I'm sorry. You just go through many different... You just go through many different pieces on how do I go from 3.7 to 3.6 to 3, sorry, not 3.6, I have to do 2.6. Let me skip that one. And then here is like the lesson itself, okay? So where you have all those pieces that I just walked you through. And then when you get to the end of your test and you say, I have, I want you to be able to write something for me, because I've had this guiding question on my board all for about three to four weeks. And that one question's there, but my daily EQ changes, because I've been focusing you on your task that you're writing something. You're supposed to give me something that I can say, you have learned, not just a multiple-choice test, but you have given me something that says, this is what I've learned, so I can differentiate. I can say, if you're a Level 1 and you understood, and you give me the correct material, you've understood it. If you're a Level 5, I may grade you a little harder. What did you give me? Did you learn more? Where's it at? And so you just, all of these pulled together, you get to identify different things. And then one of my, I love the most is identifying illusions, because not everybody understands those. So that's really difficult for the kids, especially the biblical illusions. And that is taught as our standards, and it is on the AP test, so they have to know it. We have to have that rigor in there. They have to look at the things, and when they say, no, Ms. Beckett, sometimes black is just black and white is just white. And you go, no, look a little deeper. What does it mean? There's a little gray area in there. It's a gadfly. What's a gadfly, Ms. Beckett? I don't know. Let's watch a video called The Prince of Egypt from Disney. And then you show them the video of The Prince of Egypt with the gadfly. So when Dr. King talks about that, and he's referring to the clergy, they understand. So they have some context. This is just the rigor that the teachers have to go through, as well as what the students have to go through. Any questions? Yeah, I miss my baby. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I wanted to share with you, first of all, a glimpse of what social studies is looking like in our classrooms. And so these are some tweets of classroom teachers sharing activities in their rooms. I'm excited that I'm seeing more and more elementary teachers sharing, you know, what's going on, because we're hoping to see a trickle-up theory. You know, we've talked about Tier 2 and Tier 3 intervention in elementary, and where are they being pulled from? From their social studies or their science. And so it's great that we're, you know, they're getting it more and more. And with this new social studies material that we've adopted, the teachers are loving it. They are, you know, finding new things and new excitement. The kids are really loving it. So this is some examples. Also, I asked our, if you remember, we switched US History into 6th grade. And so we don't have any data yet. They haven't taken the EOC. But I did ask our civics teachers, what do you see? What are you observing? And so these are some of their quotes, that the students have more background knowledge, they're having more of a foundation of, you know, what our government is, what it means, the vocabulary is richer. One teacher, you'll see on the quote on the right, she, on the first day of school, asked what the three branches of government were, and was excited that over half the class remembered. So we're starting, you know, we're not starting from scratch here. And so we're hoping that, that all of this, with the instruction in elementary, you know, the increased instruction in elementary, and background knowledge going into the civics EOC, that it's only going to keep growing. So speaking of the civics EOC, I wanted to give you a glimpse as to, you know, what it looks like and the rigor of it. You know, we talk a lot about ELA and the rigor. Well, I want to share that this is a very rigorous test, too. And you also mentioned 7th graders and how difficult they are to teach and motivate. Now, we're asking these 11- and 12-year-olds to take this EOC, the only one in the middle school that's required of all students, and then perform well. And I'm very proud of our civics and US History scores, especially civics. I mean, they just keep climbing and climbing, as does the state average. So, you know, across the state, we are getting better. And it's because we've got statewide so many resources to provide to our teachers and students, specifically in civics, because of all the outside organizations that have created resources for us. So in civics, we've got 35 assessed standards. All of them are assessed. Now, I've got an example here of two different standards, and the verb is highlighted. And the reason why is it is all about the verb. The verb in the statement or in the standard indicates how deep the students, how deep the teacher instruction must go, and then how deep the student understanding is. So in the first standard, 1.4, we analyze the ideas, which are natural rights, role of the government, and complaints set forth in the Declaration of Independence. So it's not just stating a complaint, but now analyzing it. This is a standard that our students sometimes struggle with, because, well, hopefully now they've heard more about the Declaration. They might have gone into the 7th grade before, and sadly, they don't even know the Declaration. Now, we're, you know, have a little bit more background knowledge, but, you know, they're taking it a step further. They're having to analyze. Now, the standard below is 2.1, define the term citizen and identify legal means of becoming a US citizen. Historically, this is one of the top-performing standards or, you know, items on our EOC for our Citrus County students. So why? Why would this be a standard that our students typically perform well on?
Because we focus on that, particularly our patriotism?
Okay, it could be. It's because they are all citizens, and they know it. It's something that's, they can relate to it, they have a strong background knowledge in it. This is also the first standard that we teach. And then, you know, as you're talking about something that they taught, they learned in September, and they're still performing well. But also, look at the verb. They're just defining what a citizen is, or the steps to take it. They can, they know this backwards and forwards. It is the level of complexity. So just, you know, as a background, these are, we're asking our students and teachers an awful lot. These are incredibly rigorous standards. US History has even more. We've got 69 possible standards assessed. There's 52 standards that fall under 17 umbrella standards. What that means is that you have this overarching standard. So an example here, we've got 2.1, review causes and consequences of the Civil War. Underneath those are 2.2 through 2.7, where technically, all of these, if you look at 2.2, it's talking about, it's beginning with Reconstruction. So really, they're all about the consequences of the Civil War. So if there was a test, an item on the EOC discussing the 13th, 14th, and 15th Amendment, it is assessing 2.4. It's also assessing 2.1. So you can't just say, oh, we're just going to focus on this big, broad, I mean, there's so many subcomponents in there. And, you know, and of course, our United States History students take this EOC in the winter, in December, and in the spring, depending on when they take the course. So I also wanted to share with you the cognitive complexity of some of these questions on the EOC. Now, this is a United States History question, but it's going to look just the same, but with civics content. So this is a test item that students will see quite frequently with a political cartoon. They're asked to analyze and then answer the question. So what we have to do as teachers, and what we have spent a great deal of professional development time on, is how do we get our students to understand this? Because it's not just, you know, looking at and answering the question. In fact, I've encouraged our teachers, stop, don't even show them the question. Let's first take a look at, let's go through some steps here. First thing we want to do, and we're going to walk through it together as if, you know, we're all analyzing, we are going to look at the title, because that's always important. Now, this title is basically just, you know, a statement. So the cartoon below is published in the early 1900s. So right now, we know we have a frame of reference of time. And then we're going to take a look at, if there was a caption, we would read that. Let's look at any words that we have in the image. So what words do we have in this particular image?
School.
School?
Factory.
School factory?
State.
And a state. Okay, so, you know, we've got a building with school, a building with factory. That's pretty self-explanatory. Now, we need to explain, though, what does the state mean? Because what do you think they're going to go to right away? Florida?
Florida.
It's not, right? It's the government. So, I mean, just understanding those particular terms and how it can be used interchangeably. So then, now let's take a look at what are we seeing? We see a school, we see a factory, we see somebody who is obviously of importance with the sash and...
She's motherly, she's gentle.
Okay. She's herding the little children to school.
She's just being, you know, yeah.
Yes. So the children are going to school. It looks as if the adults...
A schoolteacher, she looks like it.
She does, she does. And that probably is the reason why they look like that. So this is the prompt. Now, our questions are, you know, our low question, social issue addressed in the cartoon. Just, we have to know, what are we talking about? So right away, I know, I've got children in a, in a school, and I've got workers in a factory. I know that this is going to have something to do with education or laborers, right? So I can, I can count out some of these right away. How do I know if those are immigrants? So therefore, D's out. I don't know, I'm looking at the outside of the building, of the factory. How do I know how safe it is inside? A's out. And so then, of course, between the other two, dealing with education, C would be our answer. For the middle complexity, which problem of the state action shown in the cartoon is meant to, what's it meant to resolve? So now, we're having to take it, we're kind of having to go through another step of complexity here. So again, we don't know about the safety conditions, we don't know about literacy rates, you know, they're trying to throw you off here. The employment of child laborers would be. Now, take a look at the most complex question. And it's on what conclusion can be made about the United States in the early 1900s? Look at the correct answer. The government assumed an active role in legislating social reform. Notice, it doesn't say education. So now, they're having to make that connection, that social reform includes education. So there's a lot of different levels. You just can't, the student just can't learn about certain reforms of the 1900s. They have to be able to, you know, know what all this mean, and then interpret it after a picture.
And what level again is that?
That was a high complexity.
No, grade level with this?
11th grade.
Okay.
That's 11th grade.
Interesting, because we have a woman, someone with a skirt on. This would be 1900s, and you'd have to be quite a bit. That really happened? Was the woman who was in line with a man in the early 1900s?
Oh, I see, I know.
Going to work, you mean?
The woman, yeah, I noticed that, that she looks like, you know...
She was wearing this lunch.
You're talking about the one that's right next to the estate?
Yes.
Yeah, it does look like a woman.
Yeah, I can imagine.
It's a modern textbook, they have to be politically correct.
Yeah, I think hundreds of women in line with a guy's factory, I can imagine that. But it's a good point for discussion.
Right. And they'll notice it, too. You know, because this could be, I mean, this is a perfect, you know, beginning-class activity, because this is, you know, you've got, this is tied to a particular standard, you're walking through it, because the students have to understand how to come to the correct answer, by sometimes maybe going through the wrong answers and seeing how, why they are wrong. So we've developed some, you know, a framework for effective social studies instruction. We feel like we've done a good job. We always want to continue growing. So we're just going to kind of keep on plowing with what we know, and we know to work, and that is backwards design based on the standards. So we know, we've got our curriculum framework, we've got, at the end of this particular unit, we have to assess these three standards. So we know that, looking at the verb, how deep we have to go into that standard to show student mastery. So then we have to go back to the beginning. Now, we start teaching these standards, make sure that if they're supposed to analyze, that throughout the lesson, that we give them opportunities to analyze these grievances listed in the Declaration of Independence. And so we always have the end game in mind, whether it's the unit test or it's the EOC. We also have adherence to the pacing guide. It's not just a piece of paper we put out there. It's created by the teachers, and it's taking a calendar, thinking, how many days do we need to teach this and teach it well? And then stick to it. We get thrown off, obviously, but we make up space where we can. So on the top left is an example of the civics, a page of the civics pacing guide, and the bottom right is US History. Now, take a look. And then the first unit of US History is that standard that I showed you earlier, 2.1 and all the umbrella standards. So from all the way, beginning of the Civil War to the end of Reconstruction, seven days, because they've got to keep on going. We've got to end up in 2018.
See, that's one of the problems, I think the legislators don't understand. I have the problem with the ELA common core. I've told some of these people up in Tallahassee, I said, it's like all these geeks sat around a table and put out an index of every textbook going and just put it in a standard. And you, so you have, you cannot possibly master, you know, you've got 69 possible standards, it says 52 falling under 17. These kids are not in the classroom, you know, you can't master one in one day unless you're...
There is, it's...
It's very, very difficult.
Definitely a sense of urgency to get through the instruction.
They really need to be challenged on what we really want our kids to master.
Also, we encourage teachers to spiral in standards, you know, items where they haven't been performing well. And we've determined that through our formative assessments, or just through our unit tests. And so, you know, throw in those items again. Keep on and keep on until finally, we have some mastery. And then just as far as overall, what the instruction should look like, the students have got to be exposed to primary sources and then learn how to analyze those sources. We've seen that in all of the presentations today. It's happening in elementary, in ELA, and in social studies. It's happening, it needs to happen at every grade level. They have to, because look at what they're going to see on the EOC. It's a picture, they have to analyze it. Focus on cause-and-effect relationships. That's all history is. There's a cause, there's an effect. It keeps on going, and then that effect causes something else. So they've got to understand that. It's not just about dates, places, people. It's how these things all interact. And we have to look at events based on political, social, economic impact. How, you know, because it's, and they might all be different, but how is that affected over time? And then also exposing our students to differing viewpoints, not just the teacher's viewpoint or the social viewpoint of the particular community, but throughout history, you know, not just the winners, but what were the losers' viewpoints as well? Because those viewpoints might be test items on an EOC.
What period of Chinese history is the course start?
US History? 1860, well, leading into the Civil War. So let's say 1860.
And so they're giving the impression that in 1860, that's when our history began, isn't it, before then?
United States History in middle school is exploration to the Civil War.
So what's the beginning, the expression you mean, like of the country?
As in the column, like the Spanish, yeah. That's in, that would be in 6th grade.
And it's expression to what?
To the Civil War.
Okay.
So then they pick up where they leave off, they pick, there's a little bit of overlap, and then they keep on going.
World War I and World War II?
Would be in United, in the United States History in the 11th grade. So this is a, Mr. Hebert mentioned some, a best practices that was shared with elementaries. This is a very similar one. It's geared towards 6th through 12. And it's, it's just a suggested best practices that we know to be effective, not, it's not an evaluation tool, it's just perhaps when teachers are planning to be able to check off and know, you know, that they are meeting all the needs of instruction and for the students. And that's, that's...
Speaking of, I compliment you, too, on the use of social media and to share with your learners and to encourage them to see what else some of their peers are doing. I know I look at it and, you know, it's nice to have an idea of different things that are taking place in the classroom. And then I know you provide a lot of resources online. And then I know you provide a lot of resources online as well.
And it's great, because that's, you know, we talked about collaborating across the district, and now they can see what's going on.
You created a PLC yourself and...
Shit. Thank you.
Amy, I just want to say, you guys have been awesome.
Yeah, thank you.
Definitely team effort. So that just concludes our State of the District, Part 1. If you have any questions, we all remain in case you did. But just so that you remember, next month, at the workshop, we'll be doing State of the District 2, where we will talk about that math and science, and we'll concentrate on that data and our district initiatives and so forth, as well as other assessments like A B I D, ACT SAT, don't enroll in.
Student Service Data.
Student Services Data will also be in there, like we talked about before, as well as technology and ESE.
Thank you. Thank you. All right?